Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Virtual Meeting. It's the regular meeting of the commissioners. It's Monday, May 18th, 2020. Time is 9:02. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll remind members of the public, if they have any questions or comments about the content of this meeting, you can email those to commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. That's commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. Steve, could you call the rule for the record, please? Unmute your...
Your mic's unmute. You're...
Ms. Regan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Mr. Rep.
Here.
Thank you, Steve. For the other commissioners, the Tabled Business Ordinance 2020-002, Bridge Fund, I'd like to leave that on the table. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Those are agreement with Red Elephant for the deed sale notification?
I noticed there was some times in there. I didn't know about the timeline.
We'll take that off the table.
We did have a question about the, you know, we could discuss it. I move we approve Red Elephant's table.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to remove off the table. Could you call the rule, Steve, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, Sherri, go ahead. Do you have questions?
Yeah, my question was, there's some timelines on there, so I'm sure we need to get it settled, but I didn't know if the issue of the $1,500 advancement had been resolved or not.
That has been, and actually, that entire last paragraph of the original agreement has been deleted entirely. So there's no more advanced payment requirement or timeline at all in there.
Okay, so I move we adopt.
I'll second it.
Okay, Sherri moved to approve the agreement. James seconded. Call the rule, please.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, we have the approval for the minutes from the March 16th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
He's made a motion to approve the minutes from the March 16th. Sherri, second and rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Now, we have approval of the minutes for the special meetings on March 20th, 23rd, March 27th, April 3rd, April 10th, April 7th, April 24th, May 1st, and May 8th, 2020.
My motion to approve.
Second.
Those were the meetings when we talked about the declarations. We have a motion and a second. Steve, could you call the rule?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, before we take a look at the emergency declaration, Jamie with the Department, could you give us an update, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. As of this morning, we've seen a pretty significant jump from Friday's press release. This is almost to be expected, though. We've been hinting at this since the state took on this additional testing, IU partnership study and the OptumServe testing site out on Country Club Road. Our nurses are working this morning to get us all the details so I can get our press release all together, but preliminarily, I can tell you, we've gone from around 251 cases, I think, is what we reported Friday, to 292 cases today. It's going to be our single biggest jump in reporting. Of course, it's not just an overnight. It's a Friday to Monday morning. I believe the majority of those are nursing home related, which is our other concern. Also expected, however, based on that, I think what we'd like to do is put together a letter to the State Health Department. I don't know what exactly is going on at the state level when it comes to what they're doing with the federal funding on this, but I'm going to be putting in a formal request that they look at reallocating some of that funding towards direct support of nursing homes, not just in response to outbreaks, but to try to be a little proactive and ensure that these nursing facilities are prepared to stop any outbreaks before they occur. I don't know whether that'll accomplish anything. I don't know whether money exists, but I think we've basically identified that the high-risk population is just what has been assumed all along, and that's who's being affected for the most part right now. Hospitalization numbers, I don't believe they have jumped much, but I'm still waiting on confirmation of those as well, and we'll be able to report those as soon as I have that number. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The nursing home situation is a problem. What I would suggest is that, Jamie, you draft that letter. I'm guessing Dr. Wilkins will be signing that letter. I would suggest that all three commissioners also sign that letter. It will get the attention of the state to try to help these nursing home facilities. Jamie and I talked about this a little bit ago, and I think it's, it would be important to try to get some support to those nursing facilities.
I agree.
Sherri, you agree with that?
Does the state send in their team that they have that helps these nursing homes at all to improve things, or?
Well, they send in the strike team, but the problem is they don't send the strike team to test everybody in the nursing home. They'll send a person in, and they'll test the ones that are symptomatic, and then they'll go back to Indy, and then if they're more symptomatic the next day, they'll come in and test them. We can't get them to come and test everybody at once, and that's what I think needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Dr. Wilkins, are we using, how many are, I know you don't want to move the patients, but are they having enough space to keep them down at one end, or?
That's my understanding. It's what they're trying to do. Because I've talked to the medical directors of some of them and said, you need to isolate these people in a COVID wing, you know, if possible, and then not move them back to their own rooms until they test negative.
And did I read some nursing homes are having the same staff take care of the patients?
Oh, yeah, that's a problem, too, of cross-contamination of taking care of a COVID patient and walking out of that room and then going to go to the, I call it the clean wing, or the asymptomatic, or the negative ones, you know? That's a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, at this time, we have a supply of protective equipment that was provided by, I believe it actually came from the federal level, filtered through the state before it made it to us, and we've put in a formal request with the state to allow us to allocate this directly to some of these nursing facilities. So it came with some stipulations of where it's allowed to go, and we've been working on distributing it there, but there's a good portion of it that I'd like to get into the hands of nursing homes, because exactly what Donna was saying there, in the absence of adequate PPE, we're going to have facilities trying to reuse things, and if a staff member is forced to go between a COVID-positive room and a COVID-negative, we want to ensure that they are equipped to take everything off, start fresh, not feel the need to reuse anything out of, you know, just a lack of perceived supplies.
Jamie, how many nursing homes do we have here in Delaware County?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know.
Is it just problematic, maybe in two or three, that you're just, the education, or the?
Yeah, I think we have three. Donna could probably correct me here. I think it's three, maybe four, facilities that have cases, but that's not to say that those are the only ones with cases.
Right.
Because we, as we discussed before, we have facilities that may very well be avoiding, and I'm not saying just here in Delaware County. I think this is a statewide problem. They see what happens when a facility is identified as having cases. They see what happens in the media related to their facility name. They don't want to test at that point. I think we could be seeing that occurring here as well. And on the other end of the spectrum, we have, you know, at least one facility that proactively sought to test everyone before us even needing to tell them to. That's another detail. Mid-April, we issued a letter to all of our long-term care facilities suggesting they engage in routine testing of all residents and all staff, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, whatever they could afford or whatever they could manage to do. I think that that's, that's going to make case numbers jump, but that's how they're going to manage and mitigate any of these outbreaks.
And for the safety of the employees, I mean,
Yep.
Yeah, and if you're finding out otherwise, that's not good. Thank you.
We have cases in four nursing homes right now, as Jamie said. Four of them have been testing and have positives.
I think the other issue is to remember is these nursing facilities are owned and operated by large corporations. We're not dealing with local owners, local people here. We're dealing with sometimes people out of state. It makes it kind of complicated.
And I've talked to some of the owners of these and told them about the issues in the nursing homes. I did that on Friday. So I get to who owns the place and go to the top.
Yeah, maybe we should send our letter to them also, put some teeth in it.
Dr. Wilkins, do you have anything else to add on the COVID-19?
Just two more deaths. We're up to 23 deaths now.
Okay. Jason, emergency management, you have an update?
Yeah, good morning. The only thing that I think Jamie and Dr. Wilkins have covered everything as far as the health department and things that we're working together on. The only other thing that I think is of significance at this point is we have just about completed our local stockpile. I'm going to bring to you a policy, probably for a resolution or ordinance for the commissioners, and basically stating how this will work, because there will be, there will need to be money that exchanges hands, where, you know, individual agencies will be able to buy the stockpile to, from the county. And that being the case, that will allow us to resupply the county, so we can be the ones that are without the supply and waiting on the supply and demand to catch up, and we actually get it into the hands of first responders or health officials or whomever we'll need, and we won't be waiting on the state or the feds. So, you know, how this is distributed, because it was all grant money, we don't want to just, you know, distribute it, and then it's all gone. We want to have a way to keep the stockpile for a second round or third round, or maybe the next pandemic, or something like that. So we're to the point now, I believe, where we just need to bring the policy to the commissioners and have you sign off on it and within resolution or ordinance and how this will take place, and then probably work directly with Steve Kraykraft on how money comes in and money goes out for the maintenance of the stockpile. But other than that, still working out of the EOC, you know, updating the maps and numbers and so forth, supporting the health department in any way that we can, and again, the first responders at this point. So I think we're going to continue our efforts, working the way that we're working. So that's all that I have as far as a new update.
Thank you, Jason. Does anyone have any questions for Jason?
I'd just like to say, Jason, I want to thank you and Kyle again for everything that you guys are doing. I know it takes a lot of your time away from your family, but I just want to say I appreciate everything you're doing. I believe the citizens of Delaware County stand behind you, and they appreciate everything you guys are doing also. Just great job, and just keep it up, guys. We're very happy and proud to have both of yous.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. You know, we've got a good team surrounding us, our office managers, our ancillary staff. Everybody's really picked up the slack, everybody from, you know, 911 to the EMS guys. This has been a challenge for the first responders and, you know, getting the things into their hands that they need in a timely manner, and everybody's working very, very well together. We're addressing issues immediately when they come up, and I know, as you indicated, we're putting in a lot of long hours, and I can only say that our success is because of the employees of Delaware County, and many thanks go after them. So appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to the emergency declaration. It's 2020-11. We're going to continue with appointments, and then I'll read section number four, which is the change in the declaration. It says, commencing on May 26th, 2020, the public may enter the county building and justice center under certain rules and restrictions. There shall be a limit on the number of members of the public that shall be permitted to access the county building and justice center. No more than 25 members of the public per floor may be allowed to enter the county building and occupy the building at any time. There shall be a limit of 25 people allowed in the justice center to conduct business excluding staff, lawyers, and litigants. Those members of the public that exceed the limit in either the justice center or county building will be required to wait outside of the building following proper social distancing requirements of at least six feet intervals. All members of the public that conduct business in any county building or facility shall maintain a social distance of at least six feet between individuals at all time. They'll be required to wear a face mask or other covering which covers the person's mouth and nose during their business in the county building. Any person that refuses to wear a mask or face covering prior to entering or during their occupancy of the county building or facility shall be either refused entry or asked to leave immediately. So that's up on the screen right now. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, I have a question for Joe. On the very last sentence, on the wearing a mask, how can we enforce that without anybody getting hurt? I just want to know how we're going to enforce it, because I've seen some terrible stories.
Commissioner? Yeah, this is John Brooke.
Oh, John.
The security bailiffs that work the door will be the ones that will have to be the gatekeepers there, and they will have to use their discretion and their, their knowledge, they're all former law enforcement, to convince people to wear the masks. There will be some masks will be provided if somebody doesn't have one, but most people should have their masks when they come to the building, and that's the purpose of this resolution, this emergency declaration.
This also brings up, in a few weeks, we're going to be having an election, and are we going to be using the same language in that election?
I would say, I mean, everyone's still going to have to be required to maintain social distancing, and it, at that point, it possibly may be such a thing that when people are inside the building, they'll be required to wear a mask.
I just didn't know if we should say, instead of shall, say should, and erase the last sentence. That's just my opinion.
Well, I believe that would defeat the whole purpose of wearing a mask if you make it not mandatory, but discretionary. How would their enforcement, and anybody have been coming without a mask on, right?
Well, I believe that it shall.
They have to wear, they have to wear a mask up there. There's no question about it. I understand what you're saying, Sherri, but we have a duty to protect our employees and...
I understand, and that...
The public inside that building.
What I was wondering if, if the office holders and department heads could refuse service, but...
I don't, once they get in the building, I don't believe they could refuse service if they're, if you make it discretionary to whether they wear a mask or not. Once they're in the building, then they're going to provide service to them.
I have not been out to Menards, but you might want to look into that, because I believe if you don't have a mask and you want to go into Menards, they will sell you one for a dollar. So perhaps you could get a supply for the people that want to come in but don't have a mask, something like that.
Well, I think the difference is that Dr. Wilkins, that that's a private business, and we're a public building, and I just...
The public's required to wear a mask inside the building, all of our buildings. That's all there is to it. And if, for whatever reason, somebody does not have a mask, we may be able to provide them one.
I would think that would have to be, and I understand, Dr. Wilkins, even if they put a piece of paper over their face, that that's sometimes is just as good, better than not wearing one. Is that correct?
I would like to have some kind of a mask, not just a piece of paper, some type of mask.
Well, I'd like to have it too, but just...
I just make, just have the guards, you know, make them do it.
I agree, Dr. Wilkins.
Well, I know, Shannon, a lot of our employees has requested this also because they're afraid of getting sick. And as soon as the employees start getting sick, then who's going to be able to man the offices to take care of the public? So I would agree at this time, you know, to wear some kind of mask or face covering. And I know, Sherri, you was really for this a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know what changed your mind, but we've got to keep our employees safe, and I know there, a lot of them have requested this. So I would be for, at this point in time, and you don't know, Sherri, by the time election comes around, you know, we could start going down from the peak, and, you know, things can change. But right now, I would like to keep not only our employees safe, but also the citizens safe of Delaware County.
I understand. I agree. I just...
And I understand what you're saying.
I want to keep everybody safe. I don't want any incidents.
I agree. So what's the pleasure of the commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Sherri?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the disaster declaration. Steve, could you call the rule, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner, just as a point of order, this declaration expires June 1st, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting, so you can review the information at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the provisions for the retention of Meeks Cockrell. John?
Yes, the Delaware County Regional Wastewater District adopted a rate increase for its utility customers back at the end of April. A number of Delville residents have filed a petition, which they provided to Commissioner King pursuant to the statute. Because of my office's conflict of interest, we believe that the commissioners and the wastewater district need to retain independent counsel for this. Meeks Cockrell has done this work. I worked with Meeks on an appeal of a similar matter up in Jay County, where he was hired by the Jay County Council to review a rate increase, and I think he would be excellent at this. I've sent the petitions off to the wastewater district to determine whether the numerical requirements have been met, which I believe they will, but they need to be certified. So it would be, it's a conflict of interest for me to continue, so I think it, Meeks would be the appropriate attorney to handle this.
John, I agree. He does very nice work, but I am a little bit disappointed with the, they had a public hearing at 3 o'clock on, and it was a Zoom, is that correct, meeting?
It was. They're independent, yes.
How did the public respond to the questions? I mean, were they call-ins, or?
The public had voiced their objection prior to the meeting at the first reading. Matter of fact, the, the public hearing had to be continued once, and there were comments that were provided to the board members throughout the, I think it was about two or three weeks from the original date to the continued date. Unfortunately, the wastewater district needed to conduct their public hearing because of funding requirements for projects that they have. So there were objections that were posed. This was not unexpected that Delville was going to file their objection.
Thank you. I move we hire Mr. Cockrell for the regional waste.
I'll second it.
Sherri made a motion to approve the agreement.
Yes.
With Meeks Cockrell, James seconded. Rule called, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Next is the industrial trail project easement.
Commissioners, this is just an easement that the commissioners will grant themselves for the trail project that's going to be constructed. It's going to go around the new jail facility, the long, it was a 26th street and then up till it's, so it won't impact the jail construction at all, but we need it as part of the project altogether, just because you don't now, and something in the future, the property's transferred, whatever, the commissioners will still retain the easement along that area.
Anybody else have commented on that?
No.
Well, just a lot, ever, go ahead, Sherri.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to let everybody know, this trail project will also go down in front of Progress Rail and go down to Ivy Tech. And I believe it'll even go to Magna. We've also put in for a grant through the state, through the trails grant. At one point in time, we put in for $4.2 million, because what we would have liked to have seen was to come off the Greenway and go down 29th Street in front of Walmart and connect that to the industrial park, and from the industrial park, connect it to the White River Trailway. What the county's trying to do, we want to connect the south to the north, east to the west, to make it a lot better for people, and if you go down 29th Street around the Walmart area, you see a lot of people walking in the roadway. You see them standing out in the grass. So that's another phase that we're also looking at with the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission to connect all of these areas and make a better quality of life for our citizens. You know, because what happened a couple of years ago to the girl out on McGyrd, Morrison Road, we're trying to keep that from happening on the south side, east side, west side, and make it a lot better and safer for our community. So I just wanted everybody to know that this could end up and be a bigger project than just out around the industrial park.
I know, James, that's been your goal for a long time, and you've worked hard on this. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
I move we adopt.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made by Sherri and a second to adopt the easement for the industrial trail project. We have a motion made by Sherri and a second to adopt the easement for the industrial trail project. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Very good, thank you. Next, we have the Ivy Tech easement termination.
Commissioners, this is another easement issue. So apparently Ivy Tech had granted the commissioners an easement when they did the Cowan Road expansion several years back. And one of the easements was a temporary construction easement. It was obviously only meant to be temporary during the period of construction itself. But that easement document said the commissioners would sign a termination easement agreement once the easement was terminated. And that had never gotten done until now. So now there, there's some potential activity on that site. I think they want to try and transfer the property. And before the, the transfer goes through, they need to get this easement termination signed by the commissioner so that is taken care of and clears up some title issues. So this one's just a simple termination. We don't obviously need the easement anymore. So just terminating the easement that existed several years ago.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the termination of the Ivy Tech easement. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next is the Creed Board Recommendations. Brad, is that you?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I'll start off by just, first off, thanking you and congratulating you on this project. This is a big deal and will be statewide news today. The governor specifically released a quote at seven o'clock this morning. I'd like to read that to you before we get into this. He says, and I quote, "Today's announcement is an, is an encouraging sign of positive economic momentum in our state." State Governor Eric J. Hol, Eric J. Holcomb said, "As we safely and responsibly reopen, we are committed to working together with local and regional partners to provide the resources businesses, large and small, need to grow and get back on track. We are grateful for Inox Market Service choosing to establish its North American headquarters in the Hoosier State, and we remain confident that Indiana's skilled workforce and business-friendly environment will support the company's growth for years to come." With that being said, there is no tax abatement, no local tax abatement on this project. There's no local TIF funding pledge for this project. There's no economic development income tax locally pledged for this project. Rather, the Delaware County Advisory Commission on Industrial Development has provided a recommendation letter to you. The recommendation provides for $610,000 from state allocated creed money to assist with the development. Funds are paid out annually when, as the company hits milestones. Before you today is their formal recommendation letter and the agreement for financing approval for this. This project will significantly add to our tax base. And I think Commissioner King, do you want to share more details of the project?
Yeah, just to let everybody know, in 2019, myself and Commissioner Shannon Henry, we went to Washington DC to a summit that they have out there that brings in businesses from different countries. At that point in time, we met Inox out there, well, Inox there, and they wasn't even looking at Delaware County. They were looking at Virginia. They were looking at Ohio, and they were also looking at Michigan. Indiana was not on their radar. They was not even looking at Delaware County. We sat down, we had a discussion with them, told them all about Delaware County and even invited them here. Within a few weeks, they ended up and they visited Delaware County. We spent the whole day with them to just make it a little bit more personal, you know. And I, I was placed on the Redevelopment Commission several years ago, and I sort of watched how our economic development was being done. They would bring a company in, we would spend 30 minutes with them at a show building, we'd hand them a pamphlet, then they were sent on their way. I didn't want to do that anymore. What I wanted to do is put a team together. And when we bring these companies in, I wanted to pick them up there for, take them to the hotel, get them up the next morning, and I wanted to show them Delaware County. I wanted to show them our schools. Because these kids would end up and be their CEOs, they would end up and be their employers, or their employees. You know, I wanted to show them what Delaware County really means to me and everybody else within this community. So I looked at it, we're not selling the building, we have to sell our community. And that's what we did with, with Inox. They come in and one of the reasons why they are picking us, and there's a quote that will be in the, the paper from Federico, which is one of the, the son of the owner of the company, you know, they picked Delaware County because we made it personal. It wasn't about business. And we showed them what we do, how we put back within our community. So, you know, I want to welcome them here to Delaware County. You know, they're, they're bringing in a $15 million investment. They're going to create over 100 new jobs for us. And what they do is they, they do stainless steel for appliance industries. They do it for cooking equipment. You know, it's, it's going to be a great fit for our community. They pay good wages. So, you know, we definitely, we got to continue to do this. And for everybody to know, this is our second Italian company that we have brought here to Delaware County. It has been hard because Brad, Brad knows that we have, it's been emails back and forth, it's been phone calls with the COVID-19 going on. But we've also got three other companies that's wanting to come here as soon as sanctions are lifted and they can come. But right now, we are starting to build back the tax base of Delaware County. And that's one of the things that we need to do to keep our, our services that everybody, you know, really needs here within our community. And I want to thank Brad for his efforts with everything that's happened. But the economic development team that we have put together, we are doing everything we can to build this tax base up. I'd also like for everybody to know that through the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, we also hired a firm to review all of the chemicals that the facility will use. Right now, the company has passed through the local state, the federal regulations. But we wanted to hire this firm to make sure that everything was, that they've described is a good fit for here, for Delaware County. So we will be doing some testing to make sure all that is completed. But once again, this is a great thing for Delaware County because out of this summit, I believe, Brad, we are the only ones that are coming away with a, a company. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner King. There were multiple companies in multiple states. At this summit, at this show, is multiple state governments showing their benefits of locating in their areas. We went in as just a county and presented and ended up talking with this company and ended up, they ultimately have chose Delaware County, which is a huge feather in your cap. Got multiple other state government economic development organizations for the project. It's not committing local tax dollars for the project. You're building your tax base. This is an environmentally responsible company, makes a clean product. They bring in raw stainless steel coils. They cut the coils, form the coils to size for the appliance industry. If you have a stainless steel appliance, refrigerator stove, microwave, dishwasher, washing machine in your house, you have seen this company's products. If you've seen the stainless steel doors on an Otis elevator or an escalator, you've likely seen this company's products. If you've been to a fast food restaurant where you see a stainless steel countertop, kitchen prep area, you've likely seen this company's products. So they make a clean product, a product that's known in the, in the world to be produced for its cleanliness and for its durability. And they cut the shape. They have multiple customers already existing in the United States that they're shipping to now. With the new regulations and the new eye on bringing back jobs back to the United States and reshoring, that's exactly what this company is doing. So to be able to announce this project in the middle of a pandemic is huge. We haven't seen project announcements in Indiana for a couple of months now. And so for Delaware County to have this win today is really an extraordinary feat. And I appreciate all of you county commissioners and your support and your hard work on this. I want to thank the others in the community. Every, everyone knows who they are, who have done lots of, of, of nice things to help this company, to welcome them and host them as we toured schools, as we toured various educational institutions and the community as a whole, the government offices. So anyways, thank you to all of you for your hard work and dedication and graciousness to this company when they did come to Delaware County and visit.
Thank you, Brad, for all your work and your staff, even Lisa, your secretary wife, does a nice job for you. And we're very proud to have this announcement today.
Thank you, Sherri. It's a team effort. We, we earn this together as a community. I'm happy to.
Brad, we did go and visit this company in Italy, and it is a good fit for Delaware County.
I think one of the important points is to, as Commissioner King said in a quote, the, the thing to do is identify the companies that we believe are, are right for our community. Then we have to visit those companies and make sure in person that what they're doing and what they say they're do, that, that they would be that correct fit for our community. And then third, we have to, and we have to date, showing this company a good welcome in our community, basically assisted them with all of their, with personalized service on all of their various needs within the United States. As you can imagine, starting a business in the United States is, is difficult, but not having personnel here, not knowing our, our ways and our customs is even more difficult. So they need that personalized service. We are here to provide that, that to them. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions. If none, I respectfully ask for your approval of the recommendation letter today from the Industrial Development Creed Board.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the Creed Recommendations, the letter. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Brad and Bill and everybody and James. Good job on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to ordinance for second reading, ordinance number 2020-003, an ordinance concerning public records request and a form to submit public records request.
This is an ordinance that you asked me to draft to kind of standardize the public records requests that are coming into the county. Kind of put this on hold during the pandemic. Coming out of this, we want to make sure that the county is responsive to people asking for public records requests and that the public records requests are particular when they make requests of the various offices. And so this is a public records request fashioned a lot on the, standard in the policy of the prosecutor's office and also consulted with the Association of Indiana Counties to make sure that this is a standardized request.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion for the adoption of 2020-003, an ordinance concerning public records request and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, resolutions for approval, resolution number 2020-013. Approving a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of Delaware County Redevelopment Commission and approving an order of the Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Bookout, again, I will brief you on this. The Delaware County Metropolitan Plan Commission did approve an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the town of Delville. This is in to include three various projects that were presented. The Forza Project, the Delville Town Hall, and also the BHI Project in Delville. So all three projects are proceeding through the process now. You're the final step to approve that the Economic Development Commission, the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission have met and given unanimous approvals of this and before you today to certify or ratify this. Happy to answer any questions.
It's a pleasure, Commissioners.
I move we adopt resolution 2020-13.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve the resolution and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Resolution number 2020-014, amendment to the resolution creating a voluntary county furlough program. I had talked to Scott. I know he had been talking to Mr. Craig Craft. We had 20, I believe 20 individuals that signed up for the county furlough program. I believe, to my knowledge, there was two of them that were part-time employees. I know things were kind of hurried with that particular program. This extends the program to allow people to sign up. This will be starting on May 28th, 2020, and under the same terms and conditions as the original resolution, terminating on August 5th. Is there any questions about this?
I'll make a motion to. Somebody have a.
I did ask council to put together a letter. I know there was concern that this furlough program was attached to some kind of layoffs. The council did put a letter together stating basically that, that this was a, this, this furlough program was just a furlough program. We don't know what will happen in the future, but it, it's just a furlough program, period.
I do have a question. I, I thought about it the other day. Is it, if there's a hardship, can the employee come back to work? Or how do we resolve that?
Well, the, the furlough program allows them to collect unemployment. Their health insurance would continue, all their benefits continue. They're just not being paid the county's payroll. I guess that if there's a hardship, that would have to be up to the commissioners and the office holder to decide whether that's going to allow them to come back to work. But the idea is to help the county save some money.
I understand, but I've, has the, the office down in Indianapolis, had they gotten called up and the checks going out on time? I was hearing it was a three-week delay. And I just worry about something like that.
I don't, I don't know if you're referring to the unemployment office in Indianapolis. I'm not. I, I, I've heard that also, and I think most employees that signed up for this are aware of that. But I, I can answer that. Are there any other questions?
I move we adopt resolution 2020-14.
Sorry.
I have a motion to approve and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Attached to the packet was the weights and measures report. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Weights and measures have, I did instruct at the beginning of this crisis to be careful if ever want to go out and do any of these procedures they do on scales and whatnot. So they have been, actually, they've been helping us do some things in the county building. So I appreciate those guys. Well, the payment of claims of $3,410,716.36. Claims totaled during the COVID pandemic are $6,25,878.87, or a total of $9,436,595.23.
Don't move.
Sorry.
So a motion to approve in a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay. Is there any other, any other business before us?
I was wondering, is the highway on their summer four days work week yet?
Yes. So the highway is on their four days. There was several of those individuals who took furlough. So they was going to stop the alternating of people and just bring everybody back to their four-day week.
Okay.
From what I understand, Mr. Jesse had talked to me last week, they were going to begin some payment projects.
That's my next question. Thank you.
Anything else?
Commissioners, I wanted to bring up one other thing. Our office has been made aware of some scam calls that have been going out to local citizens claiming to represent our department, trying to gather information related to, at least on the surface, they're claiming to be trying to gather information about COVID and contact tracing. I suppose it was probably just a matter of time before that started happening. But we've notified law enforcement and I've made a post to Facebook, tried to notify the public of that. I want to bring it to your attention as well.
Very well. Jamie, like Jason, you guys have been doing an outstanding job, working all kinds of hours during this pandemic. And I just want to thank you guys as well. You guys have done an outstanding job. So thank you and thanks to you and Dr. Wilkins.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie.
I entertain a motion for recess.
Vote.
Second.
We have a motion to recess in a second. Steve, could you call the rule, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Stay safe.